Join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you, everybody. We're, uh, it's our pleasure to be here at the Giant Valley Middle Schools this evening for a lot of reasons. First of all, I'd like to thank the students that took us on the tour of the entire school. They took us every room and the gym, and we know where the game room is. We know where all the real good places are now. So, uh, we appreciate that. They did a good job explaining everything to us.
And we'll probably have to report to the emergency room after this. I've been walking so much along. Thank you, State Secretary.
But, uh, and the school looks really nice. Uh, you know, we've been talking about the age of the school. It certainly, you know, it's, it's up there in the year ninety-two. Is that what it was? But, uh, you know, it looks really nice and it's well-kept and it looks really clean. I commend those that do that, and I'm sure everybody can pitch in because the custodians come and do so much. A lot comes down to the, the students taking pride in their schools. And, uh, you know, they do their part, but they've really recanted with the, with the, um, but we do appreciate all that. The hospitality we've been here. And I've noticed I've waited till last to talk about this food. We really, that's why we've kind of got behind schedule a little bit. We went down there and we saw this banquet, or I don't even know how to describe it. And there was a, an immense amount of food there, so, uh, we appreciate that certainly. We may not eat for a day or two, but we certainly appreciate that and all the hospitality. We're going to talk about some things. Before I go any further, let me introduce those that are with us tonight. Some of most of you know, most of us probably, but just in case you don't, let me do that. But I'm going to start down at this far end to my right. That's Larry Wilkerson. He's one of our board members. Coming in this direction is Fred Curry. He's the vice president of the board. Beside of me here, to my right, is Jeff Meekip. Uh, he's a superintendent of schools and a Giant Valley graduate. Right in. To my left is Rowdy Baker, who is a board member, and he's also a Giant Valley graduate. And then down there at the end is Carol Smith, a board member and Giant Valley graduate. So, you know, they're outnumbered. My name is Steve Priestley. I'm the president of the board. Now, uh, over there at table by themselves are the outcasts, but they're with us too here tonight. We have Susie McCann. She's Mr. Meekip's executive secretary. And beside her is Kirk King. He's the assistant superintendent of schools. I didn't miss anybody today. All right. So, let me, just a couple of things. Now, first of all, we're going to approve the minutes of our last meeting of October the eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, talk's over twenty-nine. Mr. Wilkerson made the motion? Second, Mr. Baker? Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Procedure-wise, let me just share something with you here. We have an agenda that goes out to the public three business days before our board meeting. But typically, they go out on a Thursday, because we have Thursday, Friday, and then Monday. Because the day of the board meeting, Tuesdays, don't count. So, by law, we have to do that. So, anytime that you want to see what is going to be on a board agenda, what we're going to be talking about on a given board meeting, you can always go online or somehow access our agendas and see what's going to be talked about or what we're going to be dealing with at those board meetings. So, this particular agenda went out last Thursday. And these are really, it's part of the open meetings law, but the things that we are advising the public, we're going to talk about. So, that way, if somebody has something of interest that's on there, they know that and they come and attend and, you know, they might have, there's something they want to comment about. But in addition to that, people can come to a board meeting on the night of the meeting and sign in to speak to the board. And that's, we call it the pink sheet for obvious reasons. It's pink. And if a person wanted to speak to us, they could sign in before the board meeting started and address the board with something that they had on their mind. Now, we can't really have a discussion with you or answer questions or anything, but we certainly listen to whatever is said to us. The reason we can't do that is because of the meetings law again. Whatever happens at these meetings, the public needs to know we're going to have a discussion about them. So, if somebody signs in and they start talking about something that, you know, might be important to them and they have a certain viewpoint about it, well, somebody else might have a different viewpoint and they don't know you're going to be talking about it that night. So, that, anyway, so anytime at any of our board meetings that you would like to come and address the board, you may do so by just coming before the meeting and signing this sheet. And as you can see, no one has signed in tonight, but that's kind of the way that operates. Now, uh, that would be the public comments. We're down to there and we don't have any. So, now we're down to the presentations and reports. And we're going to have three local school improvement council presentations tonight. Now, uh, all schools in West Virginia must have local school improvement councils. We call them LSICs, and I'm sure that's what they call them. But every school in West Virginia must have one, and it's comprised of faculty, parents, community people. It's all laid out in law, who, the people that have to be on that. And, uh, annually, once a year, the Board of Education must meet with every local school improvement council, every LSIC in the county, the board must meet with them. So, tonight, we're going to conduct three of those. So, often does what we do to the Giant Valley area here is we kind of combine those that are in this area and we do them on the same night. Other places that where a school might, at Harts, for instance, it's a kind of by itself, so we'll go there and just do hearts at Harts. But oftentimes, what we do here is we combine those. Sometimes we'll get a ranger by itself. Uh, Mr. Meekip has decided that tonight, we're going to do all three of them tonight. So, what we do with these, we, we allow the school improvement council to advise us of things that are going on at their school, and then it also gives us the opportunity to ask them some questions. So, we're going to move into that phase now, and, uh, Mr. Hoover, West Hamlin Elementary's first thing, you're on to your first. Mr. Hoover. Oh, yes.
Hello and welcome to West Hamlin Elementary's LSIC presentation.
I'm Carol.
I'm Brooklyn.
I'm Rowland.
And I'm Colton. We are proud to represent all students at West Hamlin Elementary as some of the fourth and fifth grade members of all classes.
We would like to thank the Board of Education members for listening to our presentation tonight. We would also like to thank them for all the support from that week.
Thank you to Ray'sville. Thank you for your support and Giant Valley Middle School for being such nice hosts to us tonight.
We look forward to going to school here soon.
Last but not least, thanking to our community members for always supporting us and being part of our West Hamlin family. We hope you enjoy our presentation.
At our school, we have a leader attendance program. This program is simple. Every time a class has perfect attendance and no one has started, we get a letter from the world leader to put on our classroom wall. Once we've called the world leader, our class owns a prize. Then we start over and try again for the next prize.
The leader program is fun because me and my classmates and I are competitive. We want to win the prize. We are happy when we win other classes' prize because it's good for other friends to win, and we're kind of like family. But we want to win the prize too.
The leader program has changed our class because we currently have tardies now. We strive for knowledge and we love to learn. We have earned the prizes once and we are working on our second prize.
The leader program is fun, but we think there are other reasons to turn this aside too. Coming to school is fun. You get to learn and make friends. It's a lot of fun at our school, but it's a lot of work. Some kids don't get to do the things we do or learn what we learned. They don't have teachers that care, so we don't want to waste their chance.
There are still many good things happening through student achievement at our school. Each month, some students receive achievements and medals for their hard work. We all set goals for the next month and weeks, and we try to reach those goals every day.
This year, fourth and fifth graders are switching classes, and we have an awesome co-teacher in math classes. Our ASL interventionists help our younger classmates in grade kindergarten through third grade become better readers every day.
Over the summer, we got a new Excel libraries. We have plenty of space there, like spooky library story time, and we will be having a fifth grade learner fair with books we checked out from our new libraries.
In fourth grade, we have grade Friday. The fourth graders go to younger grades and help them read. We also go to related arts to help them with mental and physical skills. We learn a lot from each other too.
We also have accountability partners.
We check in with each other every day to help keep each other on track. Make sure we did our homework or to see if we need help and check out our goals.
As a student in our school, we have safety patrol at West Hamlin. We all have a special job that helps keep younger kids safe. Some of us keep the bathrooms and halls safe. Some of us help when students get on and off the buses or get picked up and dropped off. We like being role models for the younger kids.
This year, we have a new way of loading buses because the halls were too crowded last year. We have color-coded bus signs that patrols use to load younger kids on the buses. These patrols pick up their assigned bus students and walk into the, to their buses safely at each day. It is much safer for everyone. We have lots of safety programs at our school.
We have red ribbon week and Chinese.
The fire department taught our students about fire safety, and our bus drivers taught us about bus safety.
We even have a strength department bringing the K nine unit.
We feel very safe in our buildings. All rooms are marked with emergency exits, and our halls are color, have color names, so we know where to be at any time. There are some cameras, but we feel like we need more cameras around the playground.
Finally, our teachers make us feel safe. They have been trained and they protect us. I feel like I can talk to any of my teachers for personal issues. There isn't an extruder in the building I couldn't go for if I really need to talk.
As you can see, there are many, there are many wonderful things happening at West Hamlin Elementary.
It's a fantastic place to learn.
We hope you enjoyed our part of the presentation.
We invite you to take a few minutes to watch this video of our classmates and some of the amazing things happening at our school.
Thank you.
This was created and filmed by students, so to get this, I apologize.
They started a leader program at West Hamlin Elementary. Students had to apply, were chosen by the teachers, and grouped together by classes. Every student, grades three through five, had the ability to have a job at our school. The jobs range from cafeteria leaders, hospitality leaders, school store leaders, library leaders, community service leaders.
Hospitality leader. We play that, play that, so they can yell on.
How did you get that?
Because our students have to learn how to drive, and I love to help them.
Do you have more pride in your school sense? Do I help?
Yes.
Why do we do front fodder?
To help the kids get their skill up and learn a lot more than what they already know.
How do, how do you get judges?
Um, we bring in a life of this, you know, this team.
And being good, like being clear.
Why, why do you guys choose?
Our teachers, because of the class, they, they, so they get to win our judges, and they get the prize.
We got a new Excel library. Check out books. You need to write down a board. And when you come back, you got to sign the board again, so.
What do you guys do?
And I believe.
We talk about servant habits and, uh, we play fun games.
Call procedure, ready? H.
All eyes on our side.
A.
All eyes forward.
L.
With zip.
L.
Love speed.
S.
Speak when spoken to.
All right, uh, I know Ms. Earling had shared, um, the school's data with you. But, uh, again, we wanted to go over the data as far as our, uh, general sumative assessment. Uh, it also has our attendance and our, our discipline on there. You know, as, as you know, last year was a transition year for West Hamlin. Ms. Shortridge, she, she began on the day that the state was walking through with the comprehensive schools, followed by grandparents' day and Thanksgiving break, and, and I came in the first of December. So, I always tell people that I started between Thanksgiving and Christmas, so it was a while before I saw what a normal day is supposed to look like, so. But last year was a transition year when, uh, Ms. Shortridge and I came in. And, you know, when you, you come in mid-year, you're kind of playing with somebody else's game plan and somebody else's players and, and things. So, some of the things that, uh, she and I discussed that we wanted to look at immediately was, uh, working with student attendance as well as the climate and culture of our school. And I believe that we're, we're on the right track. But with their general sumative assessment, our ELA came, came down, uh, zero point nine percent. The math came down two point one. Their attendance came down one. But as far as the new data this year, uh, this attendance piece right here, as of right now, uh, we are seventy-six percent, uh, on our attendance with, uh, ninety percent or higher. So, actually, our attendance right now is up eleven percent from last year as far as looking at our chronically absent students. But like some of the kids talked about, some of the things that we are doing to focus on achievement is we departmentalized our fourth and fifth grade. We have our strongest ELA people teaching ELA to all, all the grade. We have our strongest math people teaching our math to the entire fourth and fifth grade. We're able to utilize a math co-teacher as, you know, math scores all over the, the state and the nation are low. And, you know, math is near and dear to my heart as I know it is Mr. Meekip, so I kind of take it personal with the math as, as one of the initiatives that we want to start really, really focusing on and addressing. And, uh, I really believe that our, our student achievement as well as the attendance when we give you this presentation next year, that it will be a much better picture. Our students work hard every day. Our teachers, you know, they, they teach their guts out every day. There's nobody in that building that, that's taking a day off. There's nobody in that building that's not loving kids and doing the best and everything that we can for them. So, again, I'm looking forward to this presentation next year. I expect there to be a lot better numbers and some different colors up there.
Just clarification, that one had, again, up in the, in that right-hand corner.
Yes.
Now, what does, do those numbers reflect again?
Here is the two thousand and eighteen ELA. Yeah.
Is that a decrease from the previous year?
Yes. It's a, it's a negative point nine. We went from forty-seven point four to forty-six point five in ELA and forty-five point six to forty-three point five in math.
Okay, I thought I was trying to make sure.
That's, that's the, uh, the adjustments from eighteen to nineteen.
Next year, you want it to be a different color, huh?
Yes. We expect it to be a different color.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Well, we made our Christmas list early. Before we go over the facility things that we're asking for or need, uh, we are thankful for the new room in the library. It has enabled us to get all of our students back inside the building so that they are safer and it's just a better environment. The, um, annex is, our schedule should be removed soon, so it will also clean up our facility. You know, we've had several needs met throughout the year, but these are extras that we are asking for if possible. The first one would be the, um, where we recently changed the locks, a key card access. Um, it would be four points, and there should be a map in the folder with checkmarks. We would need four additional accesses, um, so that if teachers are out for a fire drill or various reasons, they can swipe their card at any entrance.
The checkmarks on the map are the current key swipe places we do have. The circles is where we're wanting to try to get additional ones, additional ones made.
Now, the entrance near, um, the pre-K hallway, which would be near this entrance, which is still in twelve, that's where we're in the works of maybe change, rerouting next year our drop-off procedures. And so, that would be where the students would enter in the mornings. So, that access would be important for teachers. But, um, the, the other hallway that circled, we were hoping for the push button, so the intercom system there, because what happens is, is the students have to run in from the playground to use the restroom or picked up. That, right now, there's not really a procedure. This teacher has to escort them, lead students, and use their card to let them in the building. Or we have to usually send somebody out to the building to get them. So, that would help with logistics where the student can push the button. The secretary could see them and push them in from the playground. The second thing that we're asking is if this is our picnic shelter. Currently, there is no lighting or camera views. So, that's a blind spot when we go to full footage. You can see beyond it and you can see before it, but for some reason, that is a complete blind spot. And that's where, um, our students are wanting to start the anti-bullying club. That was their first suggestion, but we had to move it because we can't monitor them there. So, we're asking for additional cameras and additional lighting being the back of the school. The third thing is, um, we were hoping for a, even a carport or some kind of awning, where this would be our courtyard, so there's kindergarten classrooms on each side. The reason is for several things. One would be that when we have special events in the gym, those students wouldn't lose that related arts time. So, we wouldn't take over Ms. Pritchard's gym. We, um, could set up a minds-in-motion, is a new initiative from the State Department. We could set up a minds-in-motion obstacle course for those students there so that they can run through it, whether it's with their teacher or with Ms. Pritchard. And then also, if it's a nice day and we need the gym, she has another location that the students could still be active in. So, um, the thing we thought would maybe be the most feasible would be like a tackle bit, probably either a metal carport or some kind of awning, just to keep the students covered. The, one of the final things is, um, a gate access where it would slide. And if you put the next one with a better view. If you notice in the first one, the students have to cross the road to go to the playgrounds right now. So, if it's, if a car comes off of the dairy road onto, um, our side road, it can be a hazard. You know, if they just run and not look. So, um, if, if you look at the guardrail, our thoughts were to attach it to the guardrail where it slides either way. And then the final thing was, we were hoping to update our signs. We still are one of the only schools in the county that has a good old marquee, although I know some people like them, um, but we hadn't thought we would ask for a, a new electronic update sign. And our volunteers would probably appreciate it too. They're out there, rain, sleet, or snow. And we just want to say thank you.
Anybody have any particular questions about anything that was mentioned here in the segment?
The gate that you're talking about, how would that function in the evenings? Would it stay closed or?
It would, it's similar to the one that's on the lower end of Midway, their exit gate. It would, it would be an automatic gate and it's motion-activated, but you could not come in from the dairy road. This would be an exit only coming from around the school.
But they can still get out?
Yes. Yes, it would be motion-activated like the Midway gate.
And then during schooltime, we already have the one gate there that locks. You have to manually lock it. So, if we wanted to even lock that during schooltime for the playground, that's an option. But with the rerouting of drop-offs in, in the morning and pickups, we're talking about possibly rerouting because we're having some safety issues in the evenings there and where people are still on the road. That would help with getting them off the main road and also help with cars cutting buses off and things like that. Then they couldn't pull down, so they could only get out, so that it would be a one-way essentially.
Is it non-what, is it not one-way down?
No.
Can we talk about that issue probably every year that we have the LSIC for the same?
Yeah.
Mr. Priestley, anything if you have to add to that. Very, uh, comprehensive and, uh, once again, we understand last year was a transitional year for you guys. Those things happen. They kind of do things sometimes, but it's the way they want, and that we, we understand that. But, uh, you know, I think, I think you're on the right track and hopefully, uh, you know, continue to do many things you're doing now and next year, Mr. Hoover will be a different color.
The cheerleading last year.
And we have seen a tremendous improvement in tardies and attendance this year.
Right.
I know we can't really report that yet, but, um, when we first came, the tardy sheet was sometimes eight pages. And we're now at three or four names. And it's even that the kids are in the hallway yelling, "Go, go, 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 go", because they get that letter if they're not tardy. So, it's proactive, hopefully.
Yeah, some unique ideas, and that's what you have to do sometimes, see if it'll work.
Probably every day, but they've done fantastic.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I was going to ask one thing. You're in enrollment. Did you, moment?
It dropped pretty significantly. We're about four sixty. And, you know, typically, West Hamlin's anywhere from five twenty to five forty. So, we had a very large eighth grade, or eighth grade, fifth grade class that moved on to the middle school and a, a little smaller, uh, pre-K, but that only counted for about twenty kids. But we had a lot of transfers, um, out of county, a few in county.
So, it did significantly.
It was probably about, what, about a sixty, sixty kid drop, sixty five.
All right, thank you. I wondered about that. Okay, we'll let them, uh, get out of their things there.
No, no song dance today. I don't have the energy to do a song dance.
Just been on a tour and we ate a lot.
Do they, no, I didn't bring one. I thought that was, that was your set. I'm sorry.
Really, I don't have to have that. I've got a, I've got paper.
Really, I don't have to have that. I've got a, I've got paper coffee.
Are you sure I can sit greenies up?
My, I've got paper coffee. It's not a disease. I'm s- I'm not, I'm sorry. I'm not contagious. No, I have, I was tested. I'm not contagious. But you know why? It's the story section because I know I have no vaccine.
Thank you all parents who came to come out tonight.
Thank you all.
It's, uh, she doesn't have to.
Are you sure?
That's, everything is right here.
Okay.
I'll, I'll give you a copy. I've got an excuse copy I'll give to you. Yes.
Okay.
But everything's on this, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, next thing, we have Rain Hill Mercury, and this is Mounds and Franklin. We're leaving it up to her.
We're, we're going to start out with the first page of student achievement. And as you can see, I've, uh, noted that we have met our annual target in mathematics for the general sum of assessment for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year as well as two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. And, um, I've listed the targets there, the baseline that we started at for ELA and the baseline for math. And it shows each year what our target is for us to continue the, the growth that we're seeing. Last year, sixty-nine percent of our fifth, our current fifth graders, which were fourth graders last year, they, uh, sixty-nine percent of them increased their score in ELA from the eighteen eighteen to the nineteen nineteen on the general sum of assessment. And eighty-five percent of those students increased in math, which was major. And I count that for a lot of, where we've departmentalized and Mr. Atkins is doing fourth and fifth grade math. And he knows where those students are when he gets them in fourth grade. This was his students he had had, and they had made that much growth. Because he knows where they're at when they end the year, and he picks right up and continues on. As well as the same thing in the ELA. Ms. Kelsey knows where they're at, and she can continue that and make the growth. Uh, I have our two thousand eighteen nineteen, uh, scores. I'm like Mr. Hoover. We're looking for a different color this year. So, but, I mean, we're, we're making growth. It's small, but it's on a progressive movement. I mean, we're continuing every year to see the growth, and that's what matters. As long as those, our students are making positive increases, then everybody's doing something.
Why the huge drop-off between fourth and sixth grade and the summer assessment? And we're looking at the, the fourth and fifth grade in math for last year, twenty-three percent in the fourth and about six percent in the fifth grade.
And, and that was a shock. And I had no idea. I mean, we had looked at the numbers, we've looked at the data, we've looked at the SMI, I mean, the MI data, we've looked at the, uh, summative assessment. We have even looked at the, through the year when they do their benchmarks, and it just...
How had that class done in fourth, that's fourth grade? If you don't have that data?
I don't have that with me.
If you're making it in math.
The fifth grade that left us last year. How did they do the previous year?
Well, we don't have access to that data. They've taken off once we send our kids to middle school.
No.
But the year before, we did have it. I've got it at school.
Well, I just wondered.
But I don't think that it was as, I don't think it was really that high. So I don't think...
But your fifth graders, your, your, your fifth graders this year are the ones that are in their second year of, 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 of.
Right. They were, they're the twenty-three percent ones.
And you expect that number next year to be probably twenty-nine or better?
At least.
Given the consecutiveness of teaching.
The, the increments of growth, yeah. Definitely. Or prayers anyway.
Hopefully.
But we're working really hard. I mean, some of the things that we're doing, I mean, we, we've analyzed the data and went through. We had the summer academy, really targeted every skill, looked at where the kids were, what kids had mastered, what kids had not. So when we started the school year this year, we knew we had to do something. So we took a thirty minute, the first thirty minutes, as soon as kids leave the cafeteria from breakfast, the first thirty minutes is in a skill block. We have divided those kids up into what skills they're weak in, and we have targeted, I've got the resiliency coach doing a tutoring group, we've got the interventions, we've got Ms. Mandy, every aide in our building. Doesn't matter what you normally do, at that particular time, it's targeting skills.
Now, when you say that, are you talking about a specific subject area or just where they may be?
Fourth and fifth grade right now, math is their target. Four days a week, they have thirty minutes of skill block just in math skills.
If the other grades may be doing something?
The ELA, we've got two days of ELA, two days of math. And then on the fifth day, we do, we do leader in activities on, during that thirty minutes. But we, I mean, we are really trying to get to the bottom of everybody's weaknesses and pull them up. We're even doing it in our K one, two. We've got some kindergarten students that are not proficient in, I mean, some first grade students that are not proficient in kindergarten skills, so they're going back during that time with Ms. Jessica. We've got some kindergarten students that are bypassing those kindergarten skills that they need. They're going out to Ms. Bev during that block. So it's, it's a cross, cross-grade level, uh, basic skills block.
Purely need-based?
Yes, absolutely. Purely need-based. And that's the big, big target this year. We've got kids being pulled out with our interventions all day long, or if it's not, the, the need is for her to co-teach, she goes into that classroom. So we're looking at per grade level, per, per need. We've got homework help every morning during breakfast time. Ms. Frye is in the computer lab, set up, ready to go for anybody that didn't get homework the night before. She's right there to, to assist in anything they've got. And we have several kids that take advantage of that. So we've got that going on. We've got our social worker making home visits regarding attendance. She's had several home visits already this year with regard to some of our students that are having some major attendance issues. So we're doing everything we know. We have, uh, and I know this is on the next page, we have, um, and I'm not sure, I'm sure some of you probably met her, but it is Major Stacy Brown. And she's working with the West Virginia National Guard Drug Demand Reduction Coordinator. And it's through the National Guard in Charleston, but she works directly with the governors, uh, I mean, the governor in this project that she's got going on. And she stopped in one day just by chance. And she has already started doing various things with our kids on building self-esteem, on character education, on, um, just life skills. Just, she's sharing the obstacles and the challenges that she had and making those connections with some of our kids. And then she's, she is adamant about coming back and doing lots of activities with, with our children. So that's a great connection for some of them. And that's an opportunity, if they see that, uh, the National Guard or the military is a possibility for a career for them, that's going to help tremendously when they get to middle school and high school to know that they have something, and she has the impact to, to bring that to them. But we also have Marshall Behavioral Health coming in this year as well, working with our social worker and our counselor on their bringing, uh, their services into our school. We've went out and got parents' signatures, permission and everything. They're meeting with some of our kids that need, that have some behavioral issues, that have some, that need some counseling, that parents are not able to provide the transportation to. They're coming into the school and doing it. So that's a, that's having a, a real positive impact right now. Basically, the cameras and the safety drills and stuff, we continue that every year. So that's nothing new that you guys are, are going to hear. It's, we continue to hone in on those things. The Fire Marshal came at the end of last year and gave us some, just sort of piqued our interest on some things that we need to be thinking about, like if there was a, a, uh, major catastrophe or something and a meeting place for our parents rather than, because he said there's no way they're going to get across that bridge. So we need to have something set up. Well, now that Brenda's left us, and bless her heart, I am thrilled to death for her. But even today, the comment was made, "We have nowhere to go get anything if we need, I mean, a loaf of bread or, or chicken salad," which was our big thing. "We have nowhere to go get anything." So, you know, when you come to school at Ranger, you better bring what you want, because you're not going to be anywhere to get it. But the church next, across the river there, uh, Mr. Vance's church, we're making connections with him. When we had our trunk or treat, that church, a lot of their members came and provided, uh, treats for the kids within our school. So we're making that connection to have that as a resource for parents if something major were to happen, that they could at least meet us, meet, uh, their children there once we, once everything's cleared up and we can, uh, get them out to them. But we're just trying to think ahead of things that, to be prepared just in case something major would, would ever happen. Uh, we're still doing our backpack program. All those things are still in place. Uh, using our parent, uh, community coordinator to make a lot of parent contacts, I mean, parent contacts. We've got a lot of parent meetings scheduled, educational meetings for our parents. Uh, back in Au- August, we had the math night, and it was an educational opportunity for parents to come out and work with their children in their classroom in math activities. So that gave the parents an experience of, and it gave them the opportunity to ask questions on some of the math that their children's bringing home. So that was, that was different, but it was, it was a good experience, and we had a big turnout. And we've got a reading night set up to do the same thing, to just share some of the strategies and things that parents can do at home.
Well, that's one to hear about all the time, you know, the parents of math, they're doing it differently than we do. How you do.
Mm-hmm. And if you know Mr. Garfield or Mr. Atkins, he's as country and as down-to-earth as anybody can get. But he communicates so well with our parents. He really is able to, I mean, they just love him. And he's big and burly and just loud, but he just has that connection, and the parents love him. The kids, I thought when he first started, I thought, "Oh, my God, these kids are going to be scared to death of him." Because he is so loud. But I'm, even preschool, they can tell you. The preschool run up and grab him by the leg. And it, it works. It just works. So it's, it's a good experience. The only thing that we had talked about, and I've talked to Mr. McKip and I've talked to Mr. Gosney, our only need is storage. We have one small storage building that they repaired the roof on, and we have that. The building that they did all the major work on still looks like it's just got water running through it. And there's no way we can do away with that building because it is in that wall of that, where the road is, it's into that mountainside. So there's no way of doing anything to fix it.
Is that where the water's coming from?
Mm-hmm. And there's, it's, I mean, they have done an outstanding job of putting new roof on it. They've put, uh, gutters on it. They have put, they have put drain pipe, drains and everything. The water, I mean, sealed the inside with the stuff that's supposed to stop it. It's still running with water. So the only thing, and I've talked to Mr. Gosney, and he had talked about a storage unit that's something like a trailer that's on a semi or something like that. But that's the, I mean, other than that, we're, we're doing really good for the facility that we have. We're, it, it's holding up very well. That, the only thing is, and the preschool has a storage building, and it's a huge storage building, but preschool has lots and lots of stuff, and they have to pull their stuff out, put it in their room from one month to the next. So they just don't have any money to spend.
They need a lot of things.
Yes, they do.
Did you just move these two?
We're at a hundred and five. So we're holding steady. I mean, one week we'll gain one and the next week we'll lose one. But I can remember the days when we had a hundred and forty-five.
Yeah.
But it's...
Compared to last year, it's about the same?
It's about the same, yeah. It may be one or two different. But, yeah, we're pretty, holding pretty tight.
Does anybody have any other questions? How many students are you serving on backpack program?
I think there is about forty.
Forty?
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot.
Yeah. And some of those, we double the backpacks up. Some of them have younger siblings at home, so we make sure that they have...
That's good.
Yeah, double, double backpacks. There's some of them that the bus driver has to put, put it up front, and then they help them get it off. So just little things.
Alright, well, we sure appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
We're striving.
If you need anything, contact Mr. McKip.
Mr. Gosney has a plan too for your storage. I talked to him.
So he's, Mr. Gosney's on it. I mean, bless his heart, he, he works hard. He really does. And he's very organized, I have to say. He's, uh...
He has to be.
Yes, he does.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
She's back there somewhere. There's a nurse.
I can't even see that far.
I do like to even hear.
I do too.
That was my leadership team.
Whoever it was, thank you. Good job.
Go ahead.
I tell you, I was super impressed when I sat down and saw Kat as a, I mean, a plastic bound copy of the presentation today. And I looked and saw it was actually Des' plan. Still very impressive, but...
Okay, now we have, uh, Guy in Valley's one who had their LSIC presentation, and Mrs. Davis. And after that, Parker, after she gets started, we'll leave it up to her. And one of our guides.
Do we put that up there and then I'll pull it down as you do? I'll let you go first. Good evening, President Priestley and distinguished members of the board, as well as Superintendent Mr. McKip and Central Office Director Terri. Our student staff, our student staff at Guyan Valley Middle School, welcome and thank you for coming out tonight to learn about all the wonderful things happening here at Guyan Valley. My name is Anna Mae Davis. I'm an eighth grade student and the LSIC student representative here at Guyan Valley Middle School. I would like to take this opportunity to give you an overview of some of the things that we are doing and have done to improve our school. Last year, the students wanted to place the eat outside. So our principal, Mrs. Davis, challenged us to bring in enough box to purchase a picnic table. For the first collection we turned in, sent out six hundred ninety-six dollars. And then the challenge was posed for us to turn in just one more box to top over the amount. And we ended up raising over fifteen thousand, one thousand five hundred dollars and to purchase three picnic tables. There are leader tables that are just outside the cafeteria. Currently, we get to eat outside the leader table, eat outside leader tables. However, in the near future, they will become part of our responsible students program. Our responsible students program called Cats for Success is designed to instill within our students core guiding principles to be a successful citizen and leader. This also works hand-in-hand with our Leader in Me initiative. We earn cap books by coming to the class prepared, attending school daily, treating others with, with respect, and striving for success. Through earning cap, through, through earning cap books, we are able to spend them at the school store, purchase tickets to reward activities, entrance to the game room, seats at our leader tables, and much more. A true wildcat leader takes pride ownership in, of their community. The bubble team was proactive when the picnic tables were installed. The team laid the papers and the gravel. A group of parents and community members began with the end in mind by cleaning up the court. the courtyard. We now have a ga, a game room here at Guyan Valley. Over the summer, our group of students synergized and came together and volunteered their time in order to help paint the game room and the bathrooms. All the games in the game room were donated to sharpen our saw. Students are allowed in the game room during their lunch, after they have eaten. They can play games such as pool, foosball, air hockey, basketball, skateboard and card games or just hang out with their friends. Eventually, students will use their CAT books to enjoy the game room. Currently, it is free for student joy. Then next door, we have our new lunch detention room. Originally was full of old furniture, books, dust, dirt, broken pieces of furniture and cobwebs. Our student volunteers came in and cleaned all of it out. Lincoln County Day Report came back this summer too and helped paint the hallways, doing catch-ups along with helping miss, miss, paint Miss Ferguson's roof. Other student volunteers came in and created the bulletin boards as a spin-off from Avengers Endgame and Leader in Me's beginning with the end in mind. Our superhero theme revolves around the phrase, GB keeps the endgame in mind. In fact, a student designed a T-shirt for the staff with the same quote. They show students have put together the red ribbon bags and placed American flags on the lockers around the school. All of our students are working together in some fashion under the direction of Mrs. Zimmerman, working to complete our school-wide-based project learning program. Our staff came together this summer and participated in a DPL, book stay and a one-day training. The teachers began the groundwork for a very, a very special project. Last week, we all worked together to film a video program, the video for the program honoring our veterans and she's going to pull the video for you. Oh. I know, I just, I just.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. We thank you. Thank you for your service. We salute you for your service. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Your service is much appreciated.
Thank you for your service.
A proactive group of students decided that they would also like to save theater club here at GB. We got it all together while Mr. Altizer volunteered his time up at school to make it happen. They are currently working on their production of Hamilton. These are just some of the many examples of our Leader in Me spirit. We've done many things and will continue our efforts working together to improve our school. That being said, I will now turn it over to our principal.
I saw that video last night and uh, brought tears to my eyes again, but it's happy tears. Uh, because we worked with one of our babies, her son, um, and my co-ment from the high school. And uh, our teachers and our, our kids came up with those ideas to do that and I'm just so honored and blessed, um, that, that that happened and I, I wanted to share that because uh, I just, that to me really summarizes what we want our kids to do and collaborate um, and to have that, that confidence and that pride, um, so that's why I wanted to share that with you all. Um, but I'm going to talk about the boring stuff, which is the data. Um, my, my leadership team and I, for a while, we've been, um. So one of our goals is for students to be here. Uh, we want students here at ninety percent, ninety, uh, ninety, uh, ninety percent of the school days. Um, and right now, I'm showing you trend data. Um, I could pull back from two thousand fifteen. We have this, one year we're seventy percent or above, the next year we're in the fifties. Um, not sure why that is, um, but right now currently are, for the year, we are at ninety-two percent. So we've got to figure out how to stay there because that's crucial and we definitely don't want to go back into the, the, those fifties. Uh, so what we've started to do is look at our chronic absences and this is information that comes to us from Zoom W V E, or Zoom E W B, sorry. Um, and we can look at our chronically absent right now, um, for our school, we have twenty-nine uh, percent is chronically absent. Uh, I'm going to get into a three-tiered model here in just a second, but uh, thirty-two percent need attention and there's thirty-nine percent of our students that have no attendance issues at all. So we don't even have to worry about that group of kids. Um, we can look at chronic absences through Zoom by grade level. Um, again, the blue, these are kids that don't have any attendance issues, we're looking at especially sixth grade, forty-two percent of the sixth grade has no attendance issues at all. Um, we do want to reduce the needs attention and especially the chronically absent. Um, that, that hits us hard. Um, if they're not here, they're not learning and we've got to figure out why they're not here. Um, and that's part of my next slide, which is getting into our three-tiered attendance model. So if you think of our old RTI, you have tier one, tier two, tier three intervention, that's sort of what this is modeled after. Um, and it's kind of funny because before we had community and schools, um, or, and as we got into this process and we brought a social worker, we had a counselor, um, how do we tackle attendance? And my forethought was why can't we attack it like we do with reading or math intervention and do a three-tiered model and then lo and behold, there's actually one out there. Um, so our tier one, school-wide, we want everybody here, everybody gets, you know, everybody's part of the Responsible Students Program, which also attacks uh, behavior and attendance and the, uh, the willing to striving for success and leadership. Um, and chronically absent by definition is what we are saying that's here at Guyan Valley, there's someone that misses at least eighteen more day, eighteen plus days of school. That means that they're not going to meet that ninety percent mark and that hurts us. Um, so tier two kids that are beginning um, to be on track to be chronically absent, um, those kids we're working on too. Um, and tier three, these are the chronically absent kids. These kids, um, they're missing those eighteen days. So what we're looking at for tier two are students as they start to show signs of being absent at three days, our social workers calling home, we're making uh, home visits, attendance letters are going out that not what Kevin sends out, we're sending out something of our own to make contact with those parents to say, hey, your, your child's absent, is there something that we need to do to help you? Is there a way that we can help you? Uh, sometimes it's just reaching out and making that contact that makes all the difference. Um, also, our students that are in those chronically absent categories are tracking their attendance. Through Leader in Me, we have leadership portfolios and the students have to sell, um, set WIGS wildly important goals and one of those wildly important goals for those kids that are chronically absent is for them to be here. So they have to track their attendance and those are documented in their uh, leadership portfolios. And also having attendance meetings and doing attendance contracts, again, goal setting and um, that, what we're doing is to help Mr. Pritchard when he gets to that truancy stage as well, to say, hey, we're reaching out and we're doing these things, um, which helps him in his job. Um, state assessment, this is um, from Zoom, uh, sorry. This is also from Zoom W V E and this is just um, overview of whole school scores. Um, of course, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, that was, that was a little bit of a different test. So uh, sixteen seventeen was a fixed format, everybody got the same computerized test, so those results are, that's kind of comparing apples to oranges. Um, but the last two years of data, seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen are more of a better compatibility match that we can look at. Um, but I've been able to dive a little bit deeper into the scores and this comes from our air sat, I mean, it's kind of hard to read. Um, our sixth grade students from seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen, um, even though they're different groups of kids, they actually scored the same forty-two percent two years in a row, which is probably a, a, a ma, medical anomaly. Um, our sixth grade to seventh grade had a decrease in ELA from uh, nine percent. And seventh eighth, to, seventh grade to eighth grade had a decrease, an ELA decrease of one percent. Um, math, sixth grade to seventh grade had an increase of one percent and seventh grade to eighth grade math had a two percent decrease. Um, it's no, um, no reason to hide it, but we have, part of the problem is when you've got, looking at eighty-eight students on IEP, that's not to mention the other kids that are identified through SAP or five of the fours, that's a third of my school. And when those students don't score out of that does not meet uh, standards category, uh, it makes it really hard for us to have increase and growth. Because, and, and the sad part is those are the kids that need to grow the most. Um, so we're still going to keep implementing our learning skills classes where these uh, students can be, we can attack math and language arts. We just have gone through a, um, a, a training with Mondo, um, where they are helping us ha, as another uh, form of reading intervention where we can actually back up and do some phonics and fluency with our kids because if they don't have the phonics and fluency to read a sentence or paragraph, then they're not going to be able to read in comprehend larger texts or stretched text or complex text. Um, so we want to back up and treat that so that we can move them forward because they're always going to be stuck in first gear if we don't move, if we don't do some sort of remediation there. Um, same thing with math, like we said, we, our PLCs are working on using the GSA data. Um, I went to a PEAKS training in June, I brought that back with, uh, for the staff, um, where we took apart the test and looked at the standards that we were weakest in and they can also focus on those standards as well with math and ELA. Um, this is a nice view on Zoom in which, this is how the kids scored last year, however, Zoom populates the students to our current students, which is great for me because I don't always get to see how our fifth grade is coming in as a sixth grader, how they scored on the test. So this is kind of like, this is that snapshot of if those fifth graders were my sixth graders, this is what our scores look like from the end of last year. Okay? So that gives me a really good picture and my staff a really good picture as far as how can we, or what do we need to do with our incoming fifth graders as sixth graders? Um, and hopefully, then we can take this snapshot at the end of this year and compare it and we'll see for them. And be, and we'll know that, um, for instance, here, if we look at the sixth grade, forty-one of those sixth graders scored does not meet standards are in the red. And that twenty-nine scored partial mastery, which is the yellow, and twenty-one scored meets standards and only nine were exceed standards and agree. Um, in the seventh grade, we had thirty-two does not meet standards, twenty-six partial mastery and twenty-seven meets standards and fifteen exceeds. And in the eighth grade, thirty does not meet, thirty-four partial and thirty-one meets uh, meets standards and four that exceeded their standards. And that's just for ELA.
Yeah, I, just, it, tell me if I'm seeing this wrong, but it seems like, because the seventh and eighth grade data are from actual students here, they were sixth graders and then seventh graders and now eighth graders.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it seems like the bottom's coming up.
Mm-hmm.
But the top's coming down too.
Yes, yes.
I mean, it, 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 it's like a bell curve.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's, I mean, the, I'd like to see more green, I want to see more exceeding.
I do too, I do too.
I mean, I like the bottom's coming up and the middle's coming up, but.
But you're, you're absolutely right, I totally agree, that's, um, when I look at RI data, or reading inventory data, or math inventory data, those, especially the reading inventory data, the kids that are exceed standards there, like they're scoring a Lexile of twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred, there's no more, much more wiggle room for them because it goes up and caps off at seventeen hundred. So if those kids backslide, we've really got to figure out why do they backslide? Because once they're up there, they should stay there. And I kind of equilate that with, you know, being in a class, like I taught English for years, so if my kid comes in as a seventh grader and they exceed standards, there's no reason why they're backsliding. They need to keep moving, staying there.
I, I, I wasn't looking at this right. What I'd like to see, and you may have it for me, I know you jumped the gun, but I'd like to see, and, and I know we don't have to test change two years ago, right?
Right.
Only last two years. Next year, what I'd like to see is what the seventeen eighteen, sixth grade class score, I guess it would be the, yeah, sixteen seventeen.
See that group all the way through.
Yeah, follow them all the way through.
Yeah.
I think that, that's a much, because you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But this is a great view to say, hey, this is where our school has actually started. And I really, the one thing that my teachers and I all agreed on was the fact that we really missed doing their CBAs this year because we had so much valuable data that we could mine. Um, so, but this gives us a view without having to do the test, even though it was based on last year's test. So it kind of gives us a little bit of something, but we don't have like those standards that those kids were tested on hadn't even seen. Um, but again, like I can show you math as well. And I don't know why eighth grade group in the red, um, that, but that was our weakest class coming in as sixth graders. That was the group, because that's our current eighth grade, that was the group when they came as sixth graders, six percent were proficient. Um, so that's a killer. When you have a group of about, I don't know, ninety, you know, let's say ninety or hundred kids and only six percent are proficient, there's a problem. You know, what do we do? We, you, you kind of back up and you remediate as much as you can, but that test comes around a little, little faster than what they're ready for sometimes. Um, but that's, again, that's the same thing with math, we can look at those numbers and by the end of the, this year, when you take them test again in the spring, we'd like to see more. we'd like to see more blue and green is what we'd really like to see, less red. Um, but we're doing something right because we're keeping our heads above water. We weren't labeled a comprehensive school, um, and we have, for us, if you're looking at thirty percent special ed and that does not count your five oh fours in your SATs, we're doing something right. So we just gotta keep on that path and keep pushing and filing. Um, as far as facility needs, really and truly, uh, my, my staff, my students, my parents, my community members thank all of you for, you know, making that push to allocate funds to make that happen. Um, we truly, truly do feel blessed. Uh, we know that we've got some work ahead in there. We wanna do wall-to-wall mats on those sides of the gym. We wanna do the hydraulic baskets. We're, uh, we've got team chairs, um, coming. Uh, nobody has to walk on the floor now or walk between the team and the floor. Um, so that makes, and it just is such a morale booster for kids.
Those team chairs you told me about, are those the ones that are linked or just individual chairs?
Individual.
Will there be something under them before you set them down on that new floor?
We're gonna get a nice little, we're gonna get a nice rug runners. So you have the chair and then there'll be enough room for the kids to sit with their feet and they can just get on the floor and they don't have to worry about getting dirty or anything like that. But, uh, yeah, we're just so excited about that. It's a process. Um, it's a little slower than what I thought.
Yeah, but I bet of all the projects you have to undertake, all the things you have to worry about, when you're trying to get everything done over there, that's not quite a big a bother or some of the other things you have to deal with, right?
Hmm, I don't know. I don't know. We had a, we just, they were just, you are aware of the issues that had propped up, come up with the, with the floor, the hump and, and that, and that sort of thing. Um, you know, that, yeah, sometimes it's a struggle, but we, we may do. You know, we've, we were blessed, we, I, I say that we're blessed because I really feel like we're, we're graced by God. Um, you know, I have a great, awesome, super positive PE teacher that, you know, we have not really been able to get in there until the last month since spring break of last year. You know, we've done alternate PE outside, we've done some in here. We've incorporated, um, you know, kids researching like different games and stuff so they can be culturally aware of different types of games that are out there and, you know, give them some of those experiences that they normally wouldn't get. And, um, you know, it's been a learning curve, but, you know, we did it. Um, I don't know how other schools would do it, but we did it. Um, the center logo, um, that was designed by one of our babies, um, called Noddy. And, and that came on a whim and it was actually the day they went to lay down the stencil for the design that the floor company came up with. It was like, stop, hold the presses, we got something else. And, um, that came together beautifully. Um, I think that is such an honor to have one of our former students, you know, who came through here when it was officially a middle school, um, to design that for us and, and work with us on that. Uh, you know, like I said, we're gonna do the, the other things. And it's still a work in progress, but we've got, um, lots of people that wanna help us. They wanna paint locker rooms and bathrooms and lobbies and I'm saying, go for it because, you know, you've got this beautiful space inside. I think the rest of it is time to, we'll have to get it to match. Uh, facility other needs, if you notice out here, we have really no lighting coming up this front walk in that parking lot area, it's really dark. And now that we have those nice trees, when you come out of the building and you look out, you really don't have a good lot of sight, so it's, it's hard to see, especially even in the mornings coming in. Um, one of the other things we would like to ask for is another dumpster. We used to have two dumpsters and then we've changed companies and the, there was an old odd jewelry building and that got tore down. That dumpster went bye-byes and never returned. And when we have game nights, it's really hard between, uh, breakfast, lunch, games to make sure everything fits in that dumpster for two to three days. So our trash runs Tuesdays and Thursdays. If we've got a tournament Friday night and, and it runs Saturday and buddy ball on the weekends, come, come Monday, we're stacking our trash outside the dumpster. So, um, that's something that we'd like to look at, getting another dumpster if we could. Um, field goal posts, that's something that we painted. We'd like to see maybe an outdoor bathroom for athletic events. Um, it's kinda hard for Brandy and I to be everywhere at once during a game and we've been closing off the, the gym and just leaving that lobby open. But that's, that's hard to monitor when you're outside and the inside. Um, uh, and then other projects, basically just painting cafeteria, our basement hallway needs painted. And I know that that was a unused space for a long time and we're really starting to try to take that back over and use that, utilize that for our kids. Um, and I think it's important that if it's part of our building, why doesn't it not look good? And that's what we've been working towards, um, just trying to make it look good. Armstrong the year before really helped us in his father area. And, um, as my child said, you know, GB keeps the end game in mind. So some things that are coming up that we're looking forward to are, uh, we've got a grandparents celebration luncheon coming back. Um, I've got a great, awesome, fabulous, I can't say enough positive about her, community coordinator Connie Webb. Um, and she really, she's a real go-getter and I just, I appreciate her. The staff appreciates her and she really helps us get things going. Um, we have a social worker too that will be helping, um, actually take more charge on the grandparents luncheon. But we also have a Title One family night coming up. Um, we're gonna do literacy and numeracy smores night. We're gonna have our little campfire out here, roast some smores and have hot chocolate, do math, do reading along with our book fair. And we're gonna tie that in with, um, some basketball games. Um, that's something we did last year and it was a huge success for us. We had almost sixty people come out for a Title One night, which sometimes we only get three or four. Um, and we tied that into a ballgame and that was fabulous. Because the coaches were like, hey, go get, go get you a book, go get you some hot chocolate, roast some smores, go calculate volume. And, um, so we're looking forward to doing that again. We're also going to do a Leader and Me book study with families. Um, Mr. Davis and I got together and we talked about, um, some Leader and Me materials and one of the things that we found was we could do a book study with families. So we're gonna offer two different sessions. We're gonna offer a session during the day in which parents could come in and do a book study during the day with our community, uh, contact. And then we're gonna do an evening session for parents who might work or, uh, the day may inconvenience them to be here. And we try to offer it and if we get, we figure if we can offer things in different avenues for parents, we might have more participation and more engagement. And that's also connected to our, our community and schools initiative as well. Um, we're also going to put on a production of Hamilton. Our students have, um, led that, um, which was awesome because I really thought at first it was a challenge to see if the kids would even step up. Um, and Mr. Altizer told them, one of the first things they had to do was they had to edit the song lyrics. They have to do the choreography. They have to, you know, just figure it out. And he would devote his time to them. And so far, they've done everything he's asked, they've done and he's devoted his time. So I'm really excited to see this. Um, and then the last thing that we're really looking forward to in the spring is continuing with our, this will be our third annual teen summit, which is a conference for students. It's totally driven by what the students want. So what we've done is we send out surveys to the kids to find out what kinds of topics or social topics are they interested in. Then we find speakers, um, and experts in that field to come in. If it's human trafficking, if it's, um, healthy eating, um, just a whole entourage of different topics that they would want. And then those students, once we have those topics lined up, we're gonna be able to have speakers come to. We allow those students to select up to three and then we give them a schedule for the afternoon. So we do a general assembly like you would when you would go to a professional conference and then the afternoon, they follow that schedule. And the kids absolutely love it. The, um, speakers that come in, they absolutely love it. And, um, I think as teachers, we love it too because it's such a different way of learning and our kids always say, can we do that again? Um, so this year, Ms. Zimmerman also for, um, as part of our Celebrate Freedom Week, we did a thing with our nine eleven, for, for nine eleven, our first responders coming out. And it wasn't just, oh, here's a fire truck or here's a cop car, but here's the equipment we're gonna use if there's ever an emergency and let's show you how to use it. Let them try on the equipment, let them sit in the driver's seat and show them what some of these buttons actually do. And, um, our kids had a fabulous time with that. They really learned a lot and that was another thing that they came back to say, can we do that again? Can we have another learning day like that? So I think the more times that we can put those real, real world, um, opportunities in our hands, that's something we definitely wanna keep on doing. Um, and I just wanna thank you, um, for your time. We appreciate you and we just wanna keep working together, making this happen.
Does anybody have anything in particular? Uh, did a very thorough presentation there, covered everything. Once again, uh, appearances here, what we see are a lot of positive things going on in the facility itself, to the activities that you have on. I know a lot of unique things there, so we can mention to that. Um, but, uh, as always, you gotta keep working and you all will be. We'll try to do all we can to help.
We appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, uh, at this time, I'd like to take about ten minutes briefly quickly. We'll resume in about ten minutes.